The Town Administrator has the privilege to serve as Chairman Pro Tem at this, the Board's first meeting after the annual Town Election. At this time, I will call to order the Selectmen's Meeting of May 12, 2015, and direct your attention to the first item on our calendar, which calls for the Board to organize itself for the election of a Chairman. I have in hand the Town Clerk's Certification of the Annual Town Election that was held on May 5, 2015, designating the election of Nancy Heller and Bernard Green to the Board of Selectmen. Congratulations to Ms. Heller and Mr. Green. We will now proceed with the election of a Chairman of the Board, and so nominations are in order at this time.
I have a nomination.
I do.
I would like to nominate Neil Woszinski. Neil spent, I think it was about 13 years, on the Advisory Committee prior to joining us here on the Board of Selectmen. He was Chairman of the Planning and Regulation Subcommittee for a number of those years. But I think that Neil is most widely known around Town for his ability to get along with everybody. And that is, will, I think, be an excellent character thing for the Chairman to have, and so I would like to nominate Neil.
Very well, second?
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Is there, are there any other nominations? Well, in that case, is there a motion that nominations be closed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. That nominations are closed, and so at this time, it has been moved that Neil Woszinski be elected Chairman of the Board for the ensuing year. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. So Mr. Woszinski has been unanimously elected Chair for the ensuing year, and will now preside over this meeting. Congratulations, Neil.
Oh, we have to, we have to do the nameplates here. So I guess...
It's funny how Mel had that all ready.
I have your speech ready.
Yeah. I'll start by saying a few words. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues for this honor, and it really is an honor, so I thank you all, and I hope I can live up to your trust and your expectations. And I'd like to thank my family who's here, my wife Susan, and my daughter Lisa, and my son Aaron isn't here, he was going to be, but maybe he's watching, maybe he isn't. But he's in the midst of a paper, and he pleaded with me to, that he finish his, be allowed to finish his paper, and knowing my son, I don't want to, it's very rare that he begs me to continue his schoolwork. So, you know, my goals as Chair in helping run this Board are, one, of inclusion, and to be welcoming to the public and all those who appear before us, and I think Town Government is really, it's a volunteer government, and it can only survive if we continue to have folks who are very skilled continue to volunteer. And I'd like to do as much as I can to widen the pool of volunteers and fill vacancies that we have on a lot of our Boards and Commissions, and bring some new faces. And I hope that the election that we just had, which energized a lot of the Town, brings some new faces to Town Government. And I hope also to keep our meetings moving. And I think my...
That was my advice to Neil as our discussion earlier today was...
Right.
The very important quality of a good Chairman is to keep those meetings moving.
Right, and to watch the clock, and I'm watching it now, and to get us out on time, so I guess those are small goals, and to treat all who appear before us with respect. And I think our jobs will be a heck of a lot easier when that happens, as it has in the past. We just had an election, and I'm hoping we can put a lot of, some of the divisiveness that happened behind us, but election really is a way of making policy choices. We made some policy choices on who we elect as our leaders, so I'm welcoming Ms. Heller and Mr. Green, Selectman Heller and Selectman Green, first time I'm saying that. And we really must be mindful of moving ahead in the future. We just voted an override, which means the Town is going to be getting some more tax revenue, but that's not just a, it's not a license to spend money. We must really be very mindful of our fiduciary obligations, and we have in the past, and I'm confident we'll continue to do that. I'm very committed, as I'm sure my colleagues are, to preserving and extending our AAA bond rating, and as we go to the bond market, that's going to become very, very important. So it's going to be important that we do the things that we need to do to preserve that rating. And that gets into planning. We're going to have to, we're going to be doing a lot of projects over the next six, seven years, some very big school projects, so there's going to be a very involved planning piece. And I'm mindful, as I'm sure you all are, that we are the Selectmen for the entire Town, no matter how folks voted in the election for us and for the override. And I intend to, and I hope you will, operate as Selectmen for the entire Town. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Selectman Heller.
Thank you.
See if you'd like to say a few words.
I would. I would like to thank those of you who were so involved in my campaign here on the Board, but also at home, but also the voters. I really feel very blessed. I feel a lot of gratitude to you for the faith and the trust that you've placed in me and on my shoulders. I am, I love Brookline. I've lived here for many years, and I want it to be the kind of Town in the future that it has been in the past. Not to say that we shouldn't do some things differently, we should, but we should have high-quality schools and excellent municipal services, and that's one of my goals in running, is to maintain those. I'm thrilled about the override, and I hope that even though we did have some contention during the debate about whether we should vote yes or no, that we all love Brookline, and that I hope we can all come together and work together for the Town that we love. And again, I want to express my thanks to the voters for your faith and trust in me, and I promise to do my best to fulfill that. Thank you.
Selectman Green, would you like to say a few words?
I would. The campaign's over, and now the real work begins. I'd also like to thank the people who helped with my campaign, people I approached and sought out the assistance of, as well as a lot of people who just showed up and said, "I want to help." I really appreciate that. It made me really feel good about the campaign and about Brookline. And also the voters, many of whom may have voted for me because they had two votes and they wanted to use them both, or maybe they thought that I represented something that they thought was useful for Brookline. I appreciate the votes, no matter what the reason, and I appreciate those who didn't vote for me, because they showed some initiative and some commitment to this thing we call democracy and Town Government, and that's very important. You know, I've served on a municipal board in the past, and I know that it can be very, very difficult. It can be sometimes chaotic. And it's going to require on my part, you know, a lot of focus, a lot of hard work, a lot of discipline, but it's also going to require on your part, you know, the residents of Brookline, something also, and that is encouragement to us, positive criticism, constructive engagement with us, open-mindedness. You know, one of the things we have in Brookline that's both a good thing and a bad thing is we have a lot of smart people. The good part about that is that they know a lot. The bad part is sometimes they think they know everything. So I'm hoping that people will be willing to acknowledge the fact that this is a learning process, and there will be many things that we're going to have to sort of struggle through and try to understand that may be beyond our current ideas and ideologies and ways of thinking. So I'm looking forward to this challenge, and, you know, I promise I'm going to do my best. I think that'll be pretty good, but, you know, it would also, will also require a lot of support and help from everyone here in Brookline. So, thank you.
Would you like to add anything?
Sure, I guess, well, I must say I am so delighted that the voters chose to vote for the override, was the number that three of us who are continuing on placed on the ballot, and I think that the cuts we were facing, small but significant on the Town side of the budget, but really sort of the challenges on the school side of the budget were simply, you know, too difficult to contemplate if this override had not passed. So I want to say thank you to everyone who supported it, who voted for it. I think it was the right thing, and I'm very glad that the majority of the voters agreed with us. I also want to say how delighted I am to welcome Nancy and Bernard to the Board. I think I heard interesting ideas from both of them during the campaign, and I look forward to working with you.
Selectman Franco, would you like to add anything?
I'll join my colleagues in applauding the fact that the override passed both questions. I think that it shows great faith in the voters in this Board and in the School Committee, and I think it's going to, the wisdom of that is going to be seen over the next couple of years, as we make investments in both our physical plant, specifically the Devotion School, and in our educational programming through the expansion of some operating services. The work isn't over yet, though. I've heard some people say that, you know, the override passed, we can now sit back and move on to other issues. There's still pressing needs in our schools. We've, over the past couple of months, had a conversation about the potential for a ninth elementary school. We're expecting a study in the next month or so, and I think that whatever the results are, we here on the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee need to take the results and look for actionable items and debate the wisdom that comes out of that Committee report, or that Consultant Report, excuse me. And then the second thing I'll highlight is the High School. We anticipate some enrollment pressures at the High School. That's still something that we need to have a conversation about and look for some implementable solutions, so those are two things that I'm going to be focused on over the next year. I'll applaud both Bernard and Nancy for joining us here on the Board. I think Bernard is a thoughtful leader that was borne out in his campaign over the past couple of months, and really united the voters and residents of the Town around a shared vision in a really, a great and laudable way. And Nancy has the vision and experience necessary to help us reach wise determinations here on the Board. And she's shown her commitment to the Town through her previous public service, and I think her strong leadership and common sense approach will help us get to good results here.
Okay, so with all that said, I'd like to propose an executive session. That'll be a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and School Committee to discuss strategies relative to the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. I'm going to be moving that we go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property that may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Town. So all those in favor of going into executive session?
You mean if discussed in open session?
If, correct.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Okay, and Chair votes aye. So we're now going into executive session, and then we'll come back here at approximately 7:00 PM, and we're going to take some pictures. We're back in session, and to recap what's happened so far is, we had an election for Chair, and here I am, and we welcomed our newest Selectmen, Bernard Green and Nancy Heller, who will join us in a second, I'm sure. We just came back from executive session. I apologize for being a little late. I'm going to start with announcements of community events, and this is item three, and a couple of items that have come to my attention is, one, on Sunday, there's going to be the Eighth Annual Bike Parade, and the parade starts at Amory Park. And there's a five-mile bike ride, but people can drop in, drop out at will, and I hope, I think I'm going to be there, riding our, one of our hubway bikes. I can't wait for that.
I have, oh, you still got more?
I have a couple more. The Brookline Interactive Group, formerly BATV, BIG, is, has announced three production grant opportunities, and these are three grants, one for under seventeen, youth under seventeen, and then a couple open to anybody, and these are one to $2,000 production grants with the theme community-based storytelling, and you can visit the Brookline Interactive site for more details. And the last thing on my list is DPW. DPW is having an open house, and I suspect we'll hear a little more about it when Commissioner Papasturgen's before us a little later. And then also the, and that's going to happen on the 19th of May, and then the DPW is also holding an informational meeting where primarily Town Meeting members, but I think anyone's invited, can ask questions of the Commissioner and any of the Department Heads. And those tend to be pretty informative sessions, so, and they've also, a lot of those questions used to get asked at Town Meeting, and Town Meeting is a heck of a lot shorter now that the questions get asked at this meeting. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, this Thursday is our Senior Health Fair at the Senior Center, and the theme of the event is senior, well, not senior, but brain health in general. It is focused on seniors, but, and we're having, I think it's fully subscribed, it's fully booked up already, so if there, if people don't show up, you might still be able to get into the morning sessions and have the lunch, but there's going to be boxed lunches. What we're having, we're starting off with the keynote speaker is Dr. Dennis Selko. He is the husband of our own Polly Selko in the Planning Department, and he's an expert on Alzheimer's. We're having some other sessions on nutrition for brain health, and there'll be a little exercise session. There is going to be, if people didn't sign up and they're interested, there are going to be some smaller sessions in the afternoon, and also our Town Departments will all be represented there, as will some other senior-type organizations in Town, so that part you can come to even if you didn't sign up for the morning one. But we had this last two years ago, and it was very well-attended and very informative, so I think it'll be great.
Anyone else? Mr. Kleckner, you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to introduce a gentleman who will be joining the Town in the front row here, sitting next to Melissa, is Mr. Austin Faison. And Austin has been appointed to fill the Assistant Town Administrator position that was vacated when I promoted Melissa Goff, who in turn filled Sean Cronin's position after Sean left for the state. Austin is working currently for the City of Somerville, where he gained a lot of experience in budgeting and performance management, helping manage the city's Summerstat Initiative. And I'm really pleased to welcome Austin to the Town. He'll be starting around June 1, and we've even, he's even agreed to attend a Town Meeting before he starts, so that, oh, what dedication is that? Yeah, I think we got that covered. So I'm really pleased to welcome Austin. Obviously, he'll be working very closely with this Board in his capacity as Assistant Town Administrator.
And the Advisory Committee, too.
As well as the Advisory Committee. Any budget matters.
Right. The Town Meeting is a whole different animal.
Well, it's an easy job. I think you'll be fine.
So I'll join Mr. Kleckner in welcoming you and wishing you the best of luck in the job, and this is a great Town to work for. Okay, so we have one person signed up for public comment. Ms. Lodesch? The floor is yours, three minutes.
Thank you very much for the privilege of addressing you this evening during the public comment session. I wish to make some brief remarks about the election on May 5. We all know that it was contentious, and that there have been comments all around about the need to come together as a Town. Last Tuesday, you, Neil, said, I'm quoting you, "Now it's time to take a deep breath and start putting our Town back together and coming together as a community as we always have." I respectively say it's not so simple. The 40% of people who voted no on question one cannot be counted on among people who will easily come together. The lack of transparency, the failed leadership, the lack of evaluation or justification for programs, the manufactured crisis are just a few examples of reasons folks may have voted no. Sadly, other voters believe that independent thinking is not valued in Brookline, or that people who voted yes on question one were unaware of the consequences. The override won, but at what cost? At the cost of alienating 40% of the voters, and at the cost of a divisive and unfortunate campaign. This could have been avoided, as I said during the campaign, by putting two numbers on the ballot or making one number of compromise. Everyone agrees that Brookline is better than this, and that we must do better moving forward. To me, moving forward means working together to chart a future that plans for needs of the whole Town, that acknowledges that we've got work to do to make Brookline a 21st-century Town, while preserving what's special, and that acknowledges that there aren't unlimited tax dollars. We need to find ways to set priorities and make hard choices. Campaigns are often fueled by rhetoric and scare tactics and selective information, and this campaign was no different. I personally found the fear and intimidation factors to be regrettable, counterproductive to open dialogue, and mutual respect and cooperation. Demonizing each other over one issue because we are on opposite sides doesn't solve other important issues that our Town must address, and I experienced them personally and regret that that happened. There is a place in every election to have strong debates on issues, to rally around individual supporters, to vehemently disagree, but there's no place in this community for the sort of behavior that I've just described, and I call on each of you to strongly condemn it tonight. In the past week, I've been inundated with phone calls and emails with a common theme. Over and over, folks thanked me for focusing on very important issues, issues that would never have been discussed had I not been there. Hopefully, the thinking about long-range financial planning and leadership will not soon be forgotten. I believe that we're at a crossroads in Brookline. We need responsible planning now for what lies ahead. And I challenge you, our Board of Selectmen, to take the lead to balance future needs of the schools with the competing needs of all other Town Services. Moving forward, we must consider the entire community, and we must never say that any program or policy is exempt from review or refinement. With only 17% of residents with children in the schools, we must not continue to diminish funding for other important Town Services, the parks, police, fire, public works, seniors, roads, libraries. Equally important are diversity issues, and by diversity, I mean both racial and economic. In the recent election, racial diversity was an important topic. However, we must not forget the 30% of our neighbors who are economically insecure. My hope is that in the coming year, you will not lose sight of the concerns that were raised over the past few months, and that you will seek creative ways to address the Town's financial challenges. I'm committed to help in any way that I can.
Okay, we'll move on to our miscellaneous calendar. We have the minutes of April 28. Any changes?
I had some edits, which I've given to keep.
No, I didn't have any.
Okay, so I'll move adoption of the minutes as amended by Selectman Franco? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman...
Heller. I abstained since I wasn't here.
I abstained since I'm not here.
And I'll vote aye. Item B, question of authorizing former Selectman Betsy Dewitt to continue to represent the Town as a member of the Devotion School CM@Risk Selection Committee. Mr. Bennett?
Hi, I'd like to request that former Selectman Betsy Dewitt remain on the CMR, Construction Manager at Risk Committee. We are in the middle of that process. We hope to end that in a few weeks, but since she has been a part of this project from the beginning, we feel her institutional knowledge and leadership will be helpful.
Yeah, let me just add that I think you should appoint me as her alternate, because I think she's going to be away for a couple of weeks during this time, and I have agreed to take over the Devotion School project, the Committee that we set up under the rules of the MSBA, so I need to get up to speed on this stuff anyway, so...
This is just the Construction Manager at Risk selection process?
Right.
And then we're going to get to the other...
Right, but I'm suggesting, as I think Tony did in his memo...
Yeah, his memo.
You appoint me as her alternate on this part of it, and later we'll get to the other vote to appoint me to head the Committee.
And I'll note that there's an email in our packet from Town Council saying that this is totally possible to do, so we're in the legal clear here.
Right, and just to be clear, this is different than the BIG Devotion...
Building Committee.
Building Committee.
Correct, it's a Subcommittee for the CM@Risk.
Right.
And yes, that was my second point, was going to be to a motion for an alternate in Betsy's absence. She's on vacation, I guess, till the middle of June or sometime.
Sounds good. That's the life.
Okay, so any other discussion? I see none. So I'll move the question of authorizing former Selectman Betsy Dewitt to continue to represent the Town as a member of the Devotion School CM@Risk Committee. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
And Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then I'll move the question of authorizing a Selectman Daley as an alternate for the Devotion School CM@Risk Selection Committee for the period May 13, 2015, through June 7, 2015. All those in favor say aye.
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 And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Question C, the question of authorizing, of accepting a donation, the amount of $1,000 from the Parent Advisory Council...
Is it $1,000 or...
$10,000 from the Parent Advisory Council. $10,000 from the Parent Advisory Council of the Brookline Recreation Dolphins Swim Team to be used to replace the LED panels of the timing system at the Evelyn Corrine Aquatic Center. Ms. Paradies?
It was such a good donation, he couldn't even contemplate that number.
I know, right? That's a big amount of money. Actually, and I need to amend that amount, because there is more money that has been raised in the meantime.
Wow.
Yes, so that amount is actually going to be $12,200.
Wow.
If we can reflect the minutes on that. Lisa Paradies, Recreation Director, just here to ask you to authorize the approval of that. And I do have, very briefly, if you will, here, the President of the Dolphins Swim Parent Organization, Kim Kushner, who'd like to just say a couple of words.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you very much. As Lisa said, I'm Kim Kushner. I am the President of the newly formed Parent Advisory Committee for the swim team, and we are thrilled to be making this donation on behalf of our swimmers, who put in three hours' worth of swimming, over 8,000 laps swum. So if you want to do a quick math, multiply that by 25. And yes, so they did the work, they raised the money, they get to use this as well as the high school swim teams. So thank you very much.
This is a wonderful donation, and I want, please, convey to all the swimmers and the parents our gratitude for a good job.
I will do so. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so I'll move acceptance of a donation, the amount of $12,200 from the Parent Advisory Council of the Brookline Recreation Dolphins Swim Team to be used to replace the LED panels of the timing system at the Evelyn Corrine Aquatic Center. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Question D, item D, question of accepting a grant in the amount of $8,000 from the Brookline Community Foundation Youth Fund to be used to support the Summer Day Camp Program partnerships with the Brookline School System. Ms. Paradies?
So for the past several years, we've been lucky enough to be recipients of grant money each year to be able to support, as it says, our summer camp programs. This allows us to really open up our doors to a lot more in-need youth, especially youth who are in the public school system, receiving extended school year services. And so we have the opportunity to provide them with a really, a typical summer camp day after they complete their other academic pieces in the morning. So we're excited to, again, accept a grant opportunity from the Brookline Community Foundation. Every year, they treat us very well, and we're pleased to be partners with them. Thank you.
And I'll share the thank you to the Community Foundation. They do wonderful work, and it's a great thing to have such a community foundation. Anyone else?
Yeah, no, this is very nice. I do just wonder, I mean, I got outvoted on the warrant article about, that would make your camp counselors get minimum wage plus $1. So I was not in favor of it, because you told us that that would impact the program, but I did get outvoted. So if we assume, well, my question is, what does that mean? And what, do you have other sources of funding you can seek to make that up? If we assume that when it goes to town meeting, that the prevailing view on this board passes at town meeting?
To continue to have the plus one?
Yes, so I'm asking, because you mentioned that that would negatively impact this particular program.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, like, by how much? And, you know, if there are other sources of funding you can seek, or, you know, if there's any way we can help you to find money to make up that difference?
Well, a dollar per hour increase for each one of our staff who are in that category amounts to about $12,000 a year for us. And this BCF grant is actually a third of what we were getting just three years ago. So we are seeing reductions across the board in a lot of ways, and of course, as you know, expansion of numbers across the board in many ways due to the school enrollment issues. It certainly hasn't just been a school issue. It has been a real issue for us as well. Luckily, though, you know, we have prepared for the worst, which is not there yet, but we have prepared and budgeted to be able to cut some staff and still stay within ratio should we need to do so. So we prefer not to do that. But at this point right now, we are at about 98% capacity for our summer camp enrollments. So we're looking pretty good at this point, should we maintain that. We would look to reduce some of our, depending on what the outcome of the town meeting vote is, we'd look to reduce some of our staff members are not just higher, are simply just not higher on as many as we normally have at that rate. So that would be the cost.
I wonder if you might, I remember one summer when I was, I don't know, I think a freshman in high school or something, and my brother went to a summer camp for special needs kids, and I just volunteered to help, because I didn't have a job or anything that summer. And I'm wondering if you might be able to, you know, put up some notices at the high school or something and perhaps get some?
Volunteers?
Volunteers, yeah.
You know, that isn't a road that we've typically gone down, but it's certainly an option for us. I mean, we have volunteers across the board in a lot of our other programs, and it's certainly something, you know, we have lots of interns and people who get paid through other funded programs, other colleges and things like that, through internship opportunities. But that's certainly something we can look at. It's a good idea.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? So I will move acceptance of a grant in the amount of $8,000 from the Brookline Community Foundation Youth Fund to be used to support the Summer Day Camp Program partnerships with the Brookline School System. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Item E, question of waiving all building permit fees for all work associated with the improvements of 62 Harvard Street. Commissioner Bennett?
Yes, so the School Department is entering into a five-year lease to lease the third floor of 62 Harvard Street. It's located right outside the Pierce School. When they enter from the back, there is elevator and accessible entrance from Harvard Street. They'll be doing some interior renovations to create four classrooms. The construction cost is approximately $350,000. The permit fee would be $7,000, and we're asking that those fees be waived.
Any questions?
Yeah, I did have a question, because certainly there's a lot of crowding at the Pierce School, which we anticipate will go on for some time. $350,000 sounds like a lot of money to put into a building that we don't own, and I wondered if we had considered buying the property or?
The property is not on the market for sale. We have spoken extensively with the owners. They have expressed the possibility of renting other space in the building as it becomes available if the town needs it. But at this point, the building was not on the market. We felt the close proximity to Pierce made it a good fit.
Okay. I just want, what is the, so the $350,000 is construction. What is the rental cost going to be? Do you know?
I don't have those figures.
Okay.
That's Peter from the School Department made all those arrangements.
Any other discussion? Then I will move that we waive all building permit fees for all work associated with the improvements to 62 Harvard Street. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. And moving on to question F.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Maria Morelli, a planner in the Planning Department. The Planning Department reviewed possible measures the town could take to ensure that the appropriate state agencies were notified of the project at Hancock Village, called the residences of South Brookline, and that any applicable reviews are conducted. Because the project will receive state funding, there are two state bodies that are within the jurisdiction. This is the MEPA Office within the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and the second agency is the Massachusetts Historical Commission. That's why you have two letters before you. They are two separate reviews. They are related, but they are two separate reviews with separate criteria. So the possible outcomes of a MEPA review or an MHC review really is mitigation, and that, I really can't define what that mitigation could be, but I wanted to emphasize that neither review will stop the development of the project. Okay, under, for the MEPA review, the relevant state regs are found at 301 CMR 11. To prompt a MEPA review, the project must fulfill two criteria. As I said, it must receive state funding, and in this case, the state financing would come from Mass Development. Secondly, for a MEPA review, it has to trigger one of the thresholds listed within the regs. Those threshold categories could be land, air, transportation, and most of them are quantitative thresholds. For instance, is the project proposing over 1,000 parking spaces or over five acres of impervious surface? Very likely, this project does not trigger any of the quantitative thresholds, but there is a threshold category under historical, and that's fairly recent, and the town maintains that this project could trigger a threshold under historical. That particular criterion is demolition of all or any exterior part of any historic structure. Structure is defined in the regs as property, in this case, it would be the property or development pattern, which is based on the garden village model, and we just think that it's significant and distinct enough and should be considered. So typically, it is the proponent who notifies the MEPA Office by submitting an ENF or environmental notification form, but it's entirely up to the proponent to decide if its project actually triggers any of these thresholds. And because we haven't received any notification that such a form has been submitted, one of our options is, according to the regs, is to request an advisory opinion of Secretary Beaton, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to confirm whether or not this project meets any of the criteria. And as I stated, it, MEPA would consult with Mass Historical regarding the historical thresholds. Okay, in regard to the Mass Historical Review, what triggers an MHC review? The very fact that this project would receive funding from Mass Development is enough to trigger an MHC review. What MHC then does is determine if this project has any adverse impact on state register properties. What I mean by state registers, any property that's listed on the state register of historic places. Hancock Village is National Register eligible, therefore is automatically listed in the state register. And what MHC is going to look at is not only the site itself, but any nearby state register properties that could be affected. So that would mean that they would look at the rest of Hancock Village. They would also look at the VFW Parkway, which is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. And again, the possible outcomes, if MHC determines that there is adverse effect, they might recommend mitigation. That mitigation could extend to the rest of Hancock Village. I just don't know the breadth of that, but it is important that they are notified within 30 days they would need to render, make a determination.
I would also mention that if, in fact, the secretary does determine that a MEPA review would take place, then there's a public process, and the town would then, again, have the opportunity to perhaps even suggest mitigation measures or other aspects that we think are important.
Yeah, and I'll just say that what we're discussing is authorizing the chairman to execute letters to MEPA and Mass Historical Commission. So, Selectman Franco?
You mentioned that the outcomes of these two investigations by MEPA and MHC are mitigation measures, potentially. I'm wondering particularly in regards to the Mass Environmental Protection Agency letter, if that's a legally binding determination? I note that it says an advisory opinion, so is that sort of a suggested thing? What you should do, or is it?
I don't know, you know, I'll be very honest with you. I did initially speak with someone at MEPA, this was the Assistant Director, and just right off the cuff, he didn't think that this was going to trigger any of the thresholds. So what we're asking here really is for an advisory opinion. You know, this has to be done before the project actually commences or the state agency actually provides any funding. The mitigation could be rather benign, like just photograph and archive those photographs. I don't think that it would actually stop the project.
Well, I mean, this board, or three members of this board, have a history in voicing opinions about the proposed development at Hancock Village. My interest is really in making sure that if there is an environmental problem that needs to be addressed, it is addressed, rather than ignored or not acted upon, as it should be, to ensure the preservation of the neighboring wetlands.
Can I just respond? So I think the, if, in fact, that MEPA decides to pursue their review, that becomes binding.
Okay.
So I think advisory is this preliminary step that we're just talking about.
Well, I think it's important we go forward with this.
I agree.
I agree. I'm hopeful that we can push this so that these agencies recognize the historical aspect of this property. And I would also be worried about the environmental impact. I know that there are wetlands in the neighborhood. I don't know if they're right on that property itself, but there's also a question of blasting the ridge and, you know, what's that, what that's going to do. So I wholeheartedly support the effort to push these things forward. Hopefully, we'll have some mitigation.
There's a new member on the board. I'm sort of getting up to speed on a lot of this, but I was wondering if the historical mitigation could include preservation of certain aspects of that site that may have historical significance? Yes, possible.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we authorize the chairman to execute letters to the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, MEPA, and the Mass Historical Commission relative to the proposed redevelopment of Hancock Village by the residences of South Brookline. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
So I just want to be clear. So if one of these letters successfully gets one of these agencies to take a look at this, we would then have an opportunity to do a full presentation to them or submit material or something?
They certainly, we would make available any information that they requested. So this would just be the beginning of a process.
There's an open comment period.
Yeah, okay. That's what I'm saying. So they can't stop us from commenting this one.
That is correct.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, moving on. Question, item G, the question of awarding and executing a contract or repair of bituminous concrete patches in the amount of $201,805.25 with Mario Susi and Sons of Dorchester. Mr. Ditto?
Good evening, and congratulations to the new board members. This is a contract that we put out once every three years. The prices are fixed. We put this bid out on April 9th. We received three bids, of which Mario Susi was the lowest. The work under this contract involves, among other things, the repair of concrete patches both in the roadway and the sidewalk, the installation of new curving, and also the adjustment of castings that have settled during the wintertime. Mario Susi actually had this contract three years ago, and we've had a good experience from him during that timeframe, and we recommend the board, we'll execute the contract.
You might want to have Peter go ahead and talk about the second.
Yeah, let's talk about the next one, too, and that's awarding a contract, Winter Recovery Assistance Program, hot mix asphalt repairs in the amount of $120,000. Assistance Program, hot mix asphalt repairs in the amount of $128,586.8 with the same Mario Susi.
This is exactly the same contract as I previously described. In fact, it's the same format, same dead items. The only difference is the funding source. And this is the state's pothole money, so to speak, which does have to be, the work has to be completed by June 30th, and the final invoice has to be in by July 30th. We questioned Mr. Susi that of his ability to complete this work during that timeframe, and he showed us, showed us that that wouldn't be a problem.
I have a technical question. I, on the second item, I note that the winning bid, or the lowest bid, was below the grant which we received from the state. What happens to the extra grant money? Is it remain available to us for use in other projects, or do we sort of have to hand it back to the state because we found, we got a contract for less than that grant amount?
These were estimated quantities to get us a number. We will be coming back to you with an extra work order to complete it to $144,092.
Good answer.
Any other discussion? Then I'll move question, item G, question of awarding and executing contract, PW 15-16, repair of bituminous concrete patches in the amount of $201,805.28 with Mario Susi and Son of Dorchester. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Just one, I think it was 25 cents, I just, just to.
25 cents.
Keep the record straight.
Right. And the chair votes aye. And I'll move the question of awarding and executing the contract, PW 15-18, Winter Recovery Assistance Program, hot mix asphalt repairs in the amount of $128,586.8. I don't want to lose the eight cents there with Mario Susi and Sons of Dorchester. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a bunch of temporary licenses. I'll move them in omnibus fashion. So this is items I, J, K, L, and M. So I'll move granting a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverages license to Boston University in connection with the following events, held at 808 Commonwealth Avenue, reception on May 14th, 8 to 11 p.m., reception on May 16th, 5 to 8:30 p.m. I'll move the question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Pierce School Parent Teachers Organization in connection with a fundraiser to be held on May 16th, 2015, from 7 to midnight at 50 School Street. I'll move the question of granting a temporary liquor license to Pine Manor College in connection with the following events, be held at 400 Heath Street, all kinds alcohol for an appreciation dinner on May 21st, 2015, 6 to 9, June 25th, 2015, 6 to 11, and June 14th, 2015, 5 to 9:30. I'll move granting a temporary liquor license permit to Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with the following events, be held at 15 Newton Street, wine malt license, June 3rd, 2015, 5 to 10. Wine malt non-sales, May 27th, 2015, 5:30 to 10. All kinds alcohol non-sales, May 23rd, 2015, 5 to 11, and June 6th, 2015, 5:30 to 11. And I'll move granting a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to the Greek Orthodox Cathedral of New England in connection with the following events to be held, to be held at 162 Goddard Avenue, May 17th, 2015, 6 to midnight, June 6th, 2015, 6 to midnight, June 20th, 2015, 7 to midnight, June 26th, 2015, 6 to midnight, June 27th, 2015, 6 to midnight, and June 28th, 2015, 6 to midnight. All those, who knew this would, so much reading, gosh. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay.
And we should say that while we did that all in omnibus fashion, we have the material for all the licenses and.
Right. They all appear.
The police department has taken a look at everything and recommended that we grant those licenses.
Right. And I should have said that. So thank you for, thank you for filling in with the gaps. Okay, moving on to our main calendar. Item seventeen, item seven is a proclamation, the question of adopting a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 11th, 2015, as Women's Lung Health Week. Is anyone here to speak to that? So we have a proclamation before us which reads, whereas lung cancer surpassed breast cancer as the leading cancer killer of women, and is projected to kill more than 71,000 American women in 2015, and whereas public awareness of this number one killer is lacking, and whereas building awareness that lung cancer is the number one killer, is the number one killer is the first step, followed by educating the public that anyone can get lung cancer, not just smokers, and whereas there are many risk factors such as air pollution, radon, and genetics, and whereas the American Lung Association has launched a nationwide awareness campaign called Lung Force, and whereas Lung Force works to make lung cancer in women a public health priority, drive policy change, and increase research funding. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Brookline, do hereby designate the week of May 11th through May 17th as Women Lung Health Week, and urge all residents to educate themselves about the risk factors associated with lung cancer other than smoking, and help build awareness of lung cancer and remove the stigma that surrounds it. That sounds like a worthy cause.
Do we know of any events planned by the Health Department around this?
I, I haven't heard of anything.
Not aware, but I'll follow up.
Okay, so any other discussion, questions? Then I'll move the question of adopting the proclamation. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next, item eight is a question of adopting a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 17th through the 23rd as National Public Works Week. Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon?
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Congratulations to our new board members.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you all. This is an annual event for us. I apologize, I'm losing my voice a little bit. But on behalf of the American Public Works Association, I respectfully request that the Town of Brookline officially recognize National Public Works Week, the week of May 17th through the 23rd of 2015. National Public Works Week serves as a time to recognize the contributions of public works professionals who design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, storage, refuse disposal systems, parks and open space, and provide the protection of our environment. I'll add to that list, and particularly this year, we also plow snow.
Just a little bit.
The demands of our changing world require that these employees be available as first responders, along with our other first responders, in the event of any type of an emergency. Therefore, we believe it is important for our community to honor those who devote their lives to this service. I have included a proclamation, which we respectfully ask the board to proclaim, but in addition to that, I have two other items that I would like to announce along with the National Public Works Week. The Department of Public Works will celebrate Public Works Week with an open house on Tuesday, May 19th, 2015. To those of you who have never been to one of our open house events, I invite all of you to come. It's quite a show to see. We invite the third graders from the schools in Brookline, and that includes all the schools, public and private. They join in the celebration with a field trip to our municipal service center during the day. The doors will be open for the public from 12 noon until 6 p.m. The schoolchildren will come, of course, in the morning. This year's theme is that community begins here with our Public Works folks. We invite all of you to come. We have many, many events that especially appreciate, aided by not just the children, but by the public in general. Look at all the trucks. We have our rotors, our dump trucks, our snow fighters, our street sweepers, our new sidewalk tractors, and our new snow eating machine. We call that the beast. They'll all be there for everybody to see. Madvac litter buggies will be in operation cleaning up. They'll see a welding demonstration. We'll be walking through the repair shop and see where we repair police cars and Brooklyn Public Works vehicles. Take a tour of the sign shop, see how the town makes street signs and how traffic signals work. We'll have, of course, our recycling magic show for the children, where they'll learn everything there is to know about solid waste and recycling, maybe even pay as you throw, who knows? Water and saw pipe camera will be there in action. It's always one of the favorite attractions. The kids will learn how water is connected to the house, to a home, and they'll see our vactor truck on display. Watch our lift bucket truck, our aerial tree trucks, lift people high up into the trees there to do pruning. And we'll even have our horticulturist there teaching the children how to plant flowers, and they'll have a little something to take home with them. So it's a great day for everybody. I don't think anybody enjoys it more than the Public Works employees. They really get a real bang out of it and look forward to it every year. The final event I would just like to mention is that every year, just prior to town meeting, we have a Public Works informational forum, we call it, for town meeting members and other members of the public that wish to attend. This year, that will be held on Wednesday, May 20th, at 7 p.m. in room 111 of the town hall. And this is an opportunity for folks to come, particularly town meeting members, and ask any questions that they have that are relevant to Public Works operations, and that's in addition to the budget, not just budget questions, anything that has to do with Public Works operations. We'll be there with all of our staff and answer as many questions as we can. This is in an attempt to try to keep the lines moving at the town meeting at the microphones when the Public Works budget gets called up. So it's worked well in the past. I think each year, we generate more and more interest. We plan on continuing it, at least this for this year and going forward. So you're all welcome to attend that event as well.
Yeah, I'll say that town meeting has been considerably shorter since you and your predecessor instituted that question and answer session, so I thank you for that. And the Public Works Day, I haven't attended, but I've heard great things.
Oh, it's great. I love it. I was just going to say, you get to see all the big trucks, the little kids jumping up into the trucks to.
Pull the horn.
Pull the horn, yeah. But it's, it's, it's very fun to go up there and see what's going on, and so from 12 to 6 in the afternoon on the 19th, Tuesday, the 19th, I would urge everyone to stop in.
I want to, again, congratulate and thank you and your staff for the hard work over the winter. It was certainly a trying period, and I know everybody on this board appreciates it. I also want to thank you for, for the hard work that you've done after clearing the snow. The parks and, and open space in town look great. Tarde de bleu week, we're ever going to see grass, you know, in the month of February, but, and then particularly today, it was a windy day. I know some trees went down, so I know that your fellows and gals were quick to respond and keep the streets open and keep everybody safe. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We didn't, we didn't think that we'd see the grass this quickly.
It's funny how summer has just hit us.
I did get an email from a gentleman today up on the, on the corner of Grange and Ranger Road, though, asking when I was going to come by and remove the snow pile on the corner, because he was having a hard time getting through it. So it really threw me for a loop. We have to go out and figure out what's going on with that one.
So the proclamation that we'll be voting reads as follows, whereas Public Works infrastructure, facilities, park, and open spaces and service are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of Brookline, and whereas it's been demonstrated that Public Works provides critical response capabilities, experience, and support to all levels of government and town agencies in times of natural and man-made disasters, and whereas it's in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders of this community to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the Public Works' needs and programs and employees, now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Brookline, do hereby designate the week of May 17th to the 23rd of 2015 as National Public Works Week, and I urge all RP'ul to join with representatives of governmental agencies in the American Public Works Association in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works employees and to recognize the substantial contributions of health and welfare they provide daily on a local and national level. So all those in favor of adopting this proclamation, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
And item nine, recreation personnel, question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the, in the position of curriculum coordinator in the Recreation Department.
Thank you, Lisa Paritas Recreation. I am here to seek authorization to fill a vacancy, as it states, in the Sewell Early Childhood Center, in the curriculum coordinator position.
Any questions, discussion? I'll add, as my predecessor did, that I hope you'll work with our Human Resources Department in attracting a diverse pool of applicants, and do what you can in that area.
We absolutely will.
I'll add Dr. Jeleno to that, list of people that we should coordinate with.
Yes, thank you. Selectmen Franco? So all those, I'll move that we authorize the filling of a vacancy in the position of curriculum coordinator, lead teacher in the Recreation Department Sewell Division. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And next is item 10, council on aging personnel, question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of van driver for the council on aging. Ms. Dobek.
Thank you, Chairman. The council would also like to extend its congratulation to the new board. We look forward to working with you in this next year.
Thank you.
This van driver position is actually not funded by the town. The van driver is funded by the nonprofit. We raise the money privately and make the donation to the town for the driver. When this position started, it was only part-time, and in the last year, we have now been able to increase it so that the van driver is now a full-time position. Unfortunately, it may be to our success that we lost the driver. Our current driver, Jason Kubiaci, enjoyed working with seniors so much that he applied and was accepted into graduate school at Simmons School of Social Work. So perhaps when he graduates, we can come back and have him work for the town at the Council on Aging in another capacity. But unfortunately, we are losing his service, and I would like to say that he was just a wonderful driver, caring to the seniors in this winter, making sure that they got over snowbanks and into their homes safely, and has just gone beyond the call of duty. So we have some big shoes to fill, but it is an important position, and we are looking for authorization to fill that.
Yeah, he was, he was very good, very well-liked by the seniors. But this is a very important position because that, this is what so many seniors say to me when I get over there, is, you know, that they need the van to get there, and that it's critical to them. And in fact, the major complaint I hear is people wish the van went more places and more frequently, and we had maybe several vans or something like that. But it is, it is an important position.
Any other discussion?
I know Jason was loved by the senior population, and I will note that Simmons is not so far from Brookline, so maybe we can entice him to continue to volunteer. from Brookline, so maybe we can entice him to continue to volunteer.
We're hoping to keep him around as much as possible.
Good.
Okay, any other discussion? Then I will move. Question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of van driver for the Council on Aging. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And I'll also ask that you do work with Mr. Gellino and our Human Resources Department to attract as diverse applicant pool as possible.
We certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we move on to Item 11, Boards and Commission Interviews. And Nate Peck is here for interviewing for an appointment to the Building Commission, which is one of those commissions which is just so important. You don't realize how important until you really get involved in town government, but the Building Commission is kind of at the center of a lot of what we're doing. So, Mr. Peck, why don't you tell us about yourself?
Good evening. So I've been in the construction industry for a little over 13 years now. My education background is a civil engineering degree from Union College back in 2002. And then I worked at Turner Construction for 10 years, and am currently the President at Kaplan Construction here in Brookline.
What sparked your interest in the Building Commission?
Well, my father-in-law, Ken Kaplan, has been very involved with the Commission for quite some time. And seeing his involvement with the town, being a resident of Brookline, it seems like a great commission to be involved with.
Well, I worked with Ken on the Rongel School Project, and I would say his role there and all of our Building Commission members, it's been invaluable, you know, to some of our projects, to have the hands-on knowledge that Building Commission members bring.
And the Commission is going to be getting very busy with the Devotion School and some of the other school projects that are coming down the pike.
Yeah, it's an exciting time, for sure.
Yeah.
Do you have a particular expertise in construction? So, for example, have you done a lot of green construction or a lot of sort of mixed-use type development?
Yeah, I've worked on quite a few project types, from aquariums to office buildings to museums. The Brookline Teen Center, I did the Bright Horizons here in Brookline. You name it, I've probably come across it at some point over that time period.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. Tell me what museums and aquariums you've worked on. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I worked on three projects at the New England Aquarium. I did the Marine Mammal Center, which is on the backside of the aquarium. If you've been there recently, it was redone about four or five years ago. I did the aquarium's holding facility down in Quincy to prepare for the Giant Ocean Tank renovation. And I did all the pre-construction work for the Giant Ocean Tank. However, I left Turner at that point and joined Kaplan before that project began. And I worked on the MGH Museum, the copper building there down on Cambridge Street, and the PBD Essex Museum as well.
Okay. I think we're not making appointments tonight, but I think we'll do it shortly, because that's a commission we need to keep as fully staffed as we can. So thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're moving on to Item 12, which is a public hearing to discuss approval of the Five-Year Consolidated Plan Strategy and the FY16 One-Year Action Plan and submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. Viola?
Good evening. So we are requesting that the Board authorize and approve the submittal of the town's Five-Year Consolidated Plan, as well as its fiscal 2016 Annual Action Plan to the Department of HUD. The Annual Action Plan actually serves as the town's application for our upcoming fiscal year. And the information shown in the fiscal 16 Plan provides a budget and specifics to what projects we're looking to fund in the upcoming fiscal year. And generally, you can think of the town's consolidated plan as the roadmap for the next five years of where the town hopes to spend its CDBG funding. The Annual Action Plan, as I mentioned, contains a specific list of projects and budgets. It's expected that projects receiving CDBG funding in the program year follow along with the objectives noted in the consolidated plan. And as a program requirement, they generally have to benefit low and moderate-income individuals and families. Process-wise, the town is required to submit these two plans to HUD prior or no later than 45 days prior to the close of our current fiscal year. Community development staff, as part of the needs assessment for the plans, consulted with many stakeholders, individuals, agencies, and probably most importantly, the public. And we did this in order to determine, again, how the highest and best use of CDBG funds over the next five years. The result of this outreach and information gathering led to the content of the consolidated plan. We have a CDBG Advisory Committee whose role is to make a funding recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And I know those funding recommendations were available in your packets for this evening. In general, that committee meets, usually meets over a number of meetings. This year, it happened in March, where they hear funding requests from various applicants, and they deliberate on funding recommendations that you receive and ultimately vote on as part of your approval of the One-Year Action Plan. This year, building on the needs assessment and citizen participation process for the consolidated plan, the committee deliberated on funding for projects such as the housing authorities' capital improvements projects. There was a request from Parks and Open Space for some improvements to Aspen Wall Park. And there were also applications for affordable housing projects, both town-sponsored and privately-sponsored. The committee, in keeping with HUD regs, also has to program our public services. And unfortunately, HUD regs preclude, you know, we're limited to 15% of the town's annual allocation with regard to programming for public services. Every year, they work their magic to find a fair and equitable way to fund all of our worthy social service applicants. Prior to submitting the consolidated plan and action plan, the town's required to hold two public hearings. And in reality, our public outreach process is more extensive than that. The first public hearing we had was done at the Housing Advisory Board, and it was mostly related to community housing needs. And tonight, this actually serves as the town's second public hearing. Prior to tonight, the community development staff took out a legal ad, and it did one of two things. First, it notified the public that our planning documents were able to be reviewed. It said where they could be reviewed, how best to get comments to the town for consideration. And as well, it set tonight as a public hearing date, where this provides another opportunity for public input. So the final step, prior to finalizing these plans, is again, as part of this public hearing, to allow for additional public comment. I know there's a lot before you. There's a lot of information. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have related to process or content related to the plans. And I just wanted to clarify, the vote may or may not say it, but we are actually looking for approval and authorization to submit these documents to HUD at the conclusion of the public hearing. So with that...
I have a question. There's a, one of the big differences is between the request and the recommendation of the CD Advisory Committee is with respect to Gateway East...
Right.
...where the Advisory Committee is not recommending funding. So how does that affect the Gateway East project? Will that funding that isn't coming from this source be available from other sources?
Well, I guess the bigger answer is, at one point, this was expected to be a fiscal 16 project at the state. Recently, the project has been moved back a year. So the need for this funding is, while it's important to have the funding in hand, we have a little bit more time to resolve the outstanding planning issues related to the Gateway East project. We're actually having a public hearing tomorrow night. There'll be more discussion about bike accommodation. But to answer your question, I don't know that we would have been able to spend the funding if it was forthcoming this year, just because the project has been moved back a year at the state.
I'm this board's representative to the CDBG Advisory Committee, and I want to note that two of my fellow committee members, Siska Humphrey and Jamie Cologne, are here in the audience. And, you know, if you want to hear more about why they didn't vote for Gateway East, maybe they can speak to that. I will say that the Public Services Section D, if you look at the thing, is what Joe was talking about, where we're limited to 15%. That's, we would always, there's so many needs there, we would always love to put more into that category. And unfortunately, we can't, and so there's a, you know, pull and tug as to what gets the funding. And I will say that this year, I think the, we gave a little bit extra to the Brookline Community Mental Health Adolescent Outreach Program. That was my suggestion, because if the override had not passed, they were slated to get a cut in some other funding, and I thought this might help them out. If you want to, you know, consider that, I mean, that meant a little less, I think, for the Steps to Successes Youth Training Program. So, you know, in light of the fact that the override passed, I don't know if people want to revisit that again or not. We did try to give, we do try to give some money to the Brookline Housing Authority, and that included, I think the Energy Efficient Resident Security and Landscape Renewal Project is Brookline Housing Authority. Am I right, Joe?
Right.
That's number three in the housing list. The 112 Center Street Window Replacement Project, that, as you may know, is property owned by Hebrew Senior Life. And they, you know, made an application, and the committee, it is low-income people in there, and the committee found that favorable. But as I say, you know, maybe you should ask if any of the other committee members would like to address any of these.
Would any of the other committee members like to speak? I see no takers. Do you have an amount in mind to switch out of the Adolescent Outreach Program into...
Well, I'm not saying you need to do it at all. We did give them, as you see, if you look at the fiscal year 2015 allocation, and what we gave them this year, we gave them like about $6,000 more. We went down on the, I just mentioned this, and maybe somebody else wants to comment on it, but given that, I'm guessing, since this board voted for it, that the minimum wage plus $1 thing may pass at town meeting, that will affect that youth training program. And so, you know, there may be, they may have a little greater need. I certainly, I should have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, on Saturday night, I attended Brookline Community Mental Health's annual fundraiser, which was a great event. And we heard from some young people who had attended their adolescent program. And it was very moving, actually, to hear from these people who had gotten help. So I'm not, Brookline Community Health certainly can use the money and put it to good use. I'm not saying you have to make any change. I'm just saying, we did kind of adjust a little bit in their favor and away from the Steps to Success Program, based on, you know, some concern in case the override didn't pass. And since it has passed, I just throw it out there that, you know, it's a possibility.
So the Steps to Success Program is number eight?
Yes, youth training program.
So that's a little bit of a cut from last year.
Yeah, come up to microphone. And Jamie, say your whole name for the record, so it gets into...
Okay, I'm Jamie Cologne. I'm pretty sure you all have met me by now. We decided from most important to least important, although they are all important, however, there's wants and needs. And the reason we aimed, we gave the Brookline Mental Health more funds is to, in a way, avoid future problems. And what I mean that is, the more money they have, the more they can do, the less people go into prison. Because a lot of people that have mental health end up in prison because they don't have the sufficient funds to give those people with mental, you know, problems services. So that's why we gave them most of the money. And do you have any other questions on why we voted the way we did?
Well, I had urged all of you to maybe think of giving them a little bit extra, because they might get cut if the override didn't pass. I don't know if that influenced you or not.
That's true.
So I was just going to say, now that that isn't the case, if people want to, I mean, I don't mean to say you have to make any changes, because Brookline Community Health can certainly put that money to good use. Of course, the Steps to Success Program is very nice, too.
I think Jamie's point is well-taken, that this is really an investment in the future and has the potential to save us money in the long term.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I think it also, not only is saving us money in the long term, but addresses a very important issue in this country, and that is, I think, the fact that many encounters between police and young people have to do with police not being able to handle the type of reactions that young people with mental health issues or other issues present. And this, you know, hopefully will be a way of, or the funding would be a way of helping address that problem, which I think is critical, both in Brookline, but also more drastically throughout the country.
That's a good point. As I say, we heard from these two young people at that fundraiser, and both of them who'd been through this program said that they were contemplating suicide. And had it not been for this program, they might not be with us at this time. So I thought it was very brave of them to stand up, and it was very moving, as I say, and eloquent about how important those services are.
I have a question for Mr. Viola. We've, how to phrase this, we, as part of the Brookline Place Development, we got a contribution from Children's Hospital for $300,000 to cover the demolition of the overpass, the pedestrian bridge over Route 9. And we had previously voted to allocate CDBG money towards that demolition. I'm wondering if you can give us an update on whether those funds have been reallocated, and if they haven't, sort of what we can expect in the future?
Sure. So at the time when we submitted a request for the 300 in CDBG for bridge demolition, it was based, that amount was based on the information we had at the time. Our Public Works Department had tried to solicit input from bridge demolition contractors as a reasonable cost for demo, what a demolition would cost. The committee last year...
The committee last year voted to provide the $300,000 in CDBG funds with the understanding that at some point, when private funding from Children's Hospital was forthcoming, that we would revisit the amount. The best update I have now is that based on a more substantial look at the bridge, our Public Works actually engaged a bridge demolition contractor who spent a lot more time, frankly, than the individuals who put together the previous quotes, leading us to believe that it's substantially higher cost than $300,000. In addition to that, other than the cost of the means and methods that they put together for us, there are some needs for variable message boards, public outreach, police details, that we think is, could bring the cost of the bridge demolition up even more significantly. So, our preference is to, is to keep the $300,000 intact and earmarked for the bridge demolition until such time that it actually comes down, and then have a discussion with the board about how to reprogram at that point. That would be, that would be the preference of my department. I think Public Works feels the same way. And, you know, at some point, we expect we'll be back with a recommendation to how to do, how to move the additional, how to move that money to other programs, as you had originally asked us to look at, so.
The Children's Hospital mitigation payments are how much? 375?
No, it was 300.
300.
Right.
And we would use 100% of those in any event?
Yes.
So, this would supplement...
Yeah, I mean, that was last year's CDBG money, you know, and I have heard from Ms. Lewis, who is sitting in the back of the room, and maybe could comment on this, but you can't leave it sitting around and not spend it for very long without getting into trouble with the CDBG rules.
Right. And we've actually been able to use a very small portion of it to do some due diligence with regard to, they need to know what kind of materials are present, whether it's asbestos or, so we've used a very limited amount to do some testing related to, to inform the overall project budget that we're going to need, frankly, going forward. But Gail is right. I mean, in general, we can't sit on top of CDBG and not spend it. We get flagged from HUD, and they ask us to come up with a remediation plan. But I think our, the use of a very limited amount of funds to move forward with some environmental testing will sort of, will stave off that for the immediate future, until we can actually get back and make an informed recommendation to the board.
So, what's the timetable on the bridge coming down? Do we know that yet?
I heard today, August. There's a lot that obviously needs to happen between now and then. Public Works, I know, is in the process of putting together a, an RFQ or an RFP to engage a demolition contractor. And, you know, through that process, they hope to have a solid demo budget, and we hope to review the exclusions to that proposal, again, for issues such as variable message board, police details, whatever we need to do to get us through the project. So, but yeah, again, the latest I heard, the latest news is potentially August.
So, I think the right move is to leave the $300,000 where it is, and in the interest of efficiency, have Mr. Viola and the rest of the team come back to us in one fell swoop to reallocate the money.
So, we're looking for a vote?
Yes.
We're going to a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing? And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? I see none. So, I will...
Excuse me?
Yes.
I have a question just about the process, and I noticed that one of the places that you put a notice about, about the plan is in the town newspaper, the tab. And, you know, having been a lawyer and having put lots of notices in there, I don't know how many people read that. And I'm wondering what else you do to notify people about your plan and get comments. You obviously have had some, so...
Yeah, we do. I mean, we have, we have email lists, we have individual relationships with people. We've used, we've used town social media. We've tried to get the word out as best we can about the availability of these documents and the ability of the public to comment on them, so. But, that being said, we still have to do a legal ad.
Right.
There's still a requirement that we do that, so. But we are looking at other alternative methods of getting the message out, so.
Good. Okay.
Okay, so, we ready for a vote?
Yeah, I think we actually need two votes, one on the five-year consolidated plan, and one on the one-year action plan, if I get that right.
Yeah, I think I included a suggested vote in a memorandum to the board. It was a request for clarification. I'm happy to read it, or I think something, as Selectman Daley just mentioned, would be sufficient, too, just to note that we're voting the approval and authorization to submit both plans to HUD.
Okay, so, I will move approval of the town's five-year consolidated plan and strategy and the FY '16 annual action plan, and approval to submit the documents to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And can I just say to the two committee members and Ms. Lewis, who are here, but also to the other committees who aren't here, that everyone is very diligent at trying to work through this each year, and wishing to stretch the dollars as far as we can to as many good organizations as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viola. Okay, so now, we're moving on to warrant articles. Article eight, the budget. So, Mr. Kleckner?
Sure. So, the board has previously adopted a budget, actually adopted two versions of a budget, but since that time, as you know, of course, the override has passed. And so, last, late last week, the Advisory Committee convened and also passed a budget based on that funding level. And there are a few differences, so, from where the board voted, and so, we've asked for this article to be reconsidered. And I'm going to ask Melissa Goff in a moment to review those. I think the most significant substantive issue was the funding for the preservation staff of the, of the Planning and Community Development Department, fairly minor in the, in the scheme of things, 0.2 full-time equivalent. And I have, in the interest of trying to reach consensus, and maybe a small part of the healing process that we've discussed, would agree to that. And Melissa will explain how that can be funded, along with some of the other minor, I would consider minor changes, including some wording changes, which you have in your memo, but I'll ask Melissa to review that with you in a summary fashion.
Can I just ask, though, my understanding was that we have funding for 1.8 in preservation, and the person who currently holds the 0.8 did not want to be full-time, is that right?
That's changed.
Okay.
That has been changed now.
I see. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, just going through the memo, the special appropriations, there were two conditions that the Advisory Committee put on special appropriations for Brookline Avenue Playground, provided that no funds shall be expended for construction prior to December 1st. And that same condition was also put on the funding for the Pierce Playground. That's something that the Advisory Committee recently has put on, put as a condition on CIP projects when the design and the construction are funded in the same year. And it's just a way to kind of put a pause button on the project if the design comes out, something that maybe people aren't happy with, that there's an opportunity at a subsequent town meeting to revisit the appropriation. And so, this has been in place for a couple of years now, and I think Erin's comfortable with the language, as is, because the construction wouldn't be happening before that point, anyway. The next item is a condition of appropriation that was, we actually recommended be struck because it pertained to repair maintenance money. Previously, repair maintenance used to be funded out of services and supplies, and Charlie used to always have to go in front of the board to request transfers, and those transfers required Advisory Committee approval. A few years ago, we consolidated the accounts, so all the money is in services, so he doesn't have to go back and forth to advisory and the board as frequently, so the condition really isn't needed anymore. The next item is the preservation, which Mel outlined as well. And then, they added 2,673 to the pavement marking account. So, the, basically, the difference between the board's vote is the 16,792, which we had recommended be added to the building department, for the solar carve-out charge that we had estimated was going to be slightly higher than what we had budgeted for. And so, the Advisory Committee did not take that recommendation, they instead used those funds for preservation and pavement markings. I think we're comfortable if the board wants to go that way as well, because in similar circumstances, we may have some estimates that come out after the fact for energy. I'm thinking vehicle gasoline and diesel rates sometimes come out later, after we've already voted on a budget amount, and we usually say, let's see how the year plays out. This is a modest amount, and we usually use a three-year consumption estimate on all utility accounts, anyway, that if the board did want to come in line with advisory, I would be comfortable with that recommendation.
Can we get an explanation, though, what is the solar carve-out pass-through charges?
So, it's basically a requirement of the supplier, they have to have a certain green component in what they provide us for energy.
Uh-huh.
So, this is a piece of that, it's basically factored into their rate.
So, our electricity accounts are probably going to be higher than our contract, based on...
Our consultant estimates, estimates that there potentially could be a $16,000 difference between the estimate that he had originally provided us.
Uh-huh. And you're saying, so if that materializes, we're going to fund that? Explain that to me again, sorry.
So, similar to, you know, other estimates that may come out after the budget's already been set, we usually say, let's see how the year plays out. There are a number of things that get, that are factored into building an energy budget. Price is one component, consumption is the other. So, if Charlie does a good job with energy conservation, we very well could see this 16,000 number go away.
And if worse comes to worse, we go to the reserve fund?
Correct.
Okay, fine.
So, it's in the interest of reaching consensus and, you know, making the budget appropriation process a little smoother than it might otherwise be?
In between, and there's turnbacks frequently, so it's not a guarantee that we would have to go to the reserve fund to fund the $16,000.
Right. I would speak to, especially in this budget season, it's especially important that we go to town meeting with an agreement, given the history of this budget season.
Well, I personally don't mind going to town meeting with some differences. Frankly, I think town meeting enjoys a little back and forth on some of these issues, but these seem small enough that I'm certainly willing to go along with them.
And I think the Preservation Commission, the extra 0.2 FTEs, while it may not be a lot of money, I think the impact is going to be large.
Yeah, well, I mean, are we close to hiring somebody there? Because I think a big part of the problem in that department has been people with various reasons that we're not working, not spending much time at work.
Yes, we have hired a full-time planner who's starting May 26th.
Great.
Cool.
I'd just like to say that I was in full support of that move to hire, to move that up to a full-time position. I think that the number of LHDs and NCDs and, you know, increasing, and we have another one coming before us in the town meeting, means more work, and it's difficult, I think, a struggle for the people who are there to keep up with it. So, I'm full support of that.
Okay, so, I will move a recommendation of favorable action on the Advisory Committee.
Probably reconsider it first.
Ah, okay. So, first, I will move reconsideration of Article eight?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if, if those who didn't participate before can, they can vote on the ultimate motion...
I think we have to abstain.
Yeah, I think they have to abstain from the reconsideration, do they? Or can they vote for it? I don't know.
We didn't consider it, so we can't reconsider.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, no, I think you can vote, you just can't move it.
Right. Okay.
I, the chair, I as a chair will move...
He's the chair, so if that's what he says, okay.
So, I will move reconsideration of Article eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Heller, Selectman Green? Okay, chair votes aye.
Before you vote, I did want to also add that I also had the Advisory Committee vote on the special appropriations, but knowing that we potentially might have some minor corrections. MSBA is reviewing the language for devotion school, Bond Council is reviewing the language for all bond-funded items, and the Comptroller is also just looking at the language in the vote. So, there could be some minor changes, but nothing substantial and relevant to, you know, moving any item, any dollar amount.
Okay, so noted. So, we may see this again. So, if we do, we do. So, I will move the Advisory Committee's budget motion, favorable action, which includes the revised numbers, plus the revision to the article, the conditions of appropriation, and the special appropriation language for Brookline Avenue and Pierce Playground. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we're going to table...
Well, yes, I'm going to suggest that we wait till next week on Article 12. This is the snow and ice sidewalk removal on bylaw. The Advisory Committee did vote on Thursday night, I believe, and it was a very, kind of confusing vote. It was 8-7, and I do believe that the intent of both the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee to sort of narrow the scope a little bit, and perhaps take this in a couple steps over time, is in sync. But since I didn't have anything in writing, I would just prefer to take it up next week when we have something specifically, and I've asked the legal department to work up a very clear red-line version of the vote.
And I also recently got an email on Article nine, so that will probably be on the calendar for reconsideration next week as well.
What is nine?
Nine is a town meeting member, honorary town member.
Right, Mr. Frye is asking us to recommend no action.
And I've heard a rumor that we may hear a reconsideration request on Article 14, which is the bowl of water. So, that may materialize.
Okay, so, more, more town meeting action to come. So, let's move on.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Reconsideration of the board's Selectmen's decision to submit it to a committee? Reconsideration of what?
Reconsideration of the board's Selectmen's recommendation that the substance of the article be referred to committee.
I guess we'll hear more when we, when the motion is before us.
Okay.
Okay, I'll turn this over to Mr. Kleckner to just have, to go help us with the appointment.
Sure. Yes, well, there's, this is in the case of the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission, and we have one vacancy and one...
Can I just say to the new members, we usually vote en masse when we're doing the appointments, we don't do a roll call vote?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that was new to me, too. I didn't realize that until I got here, but that was my responsibility to do that. But anyway, we have an incumbent alternate appointment of Dennis DeWitt, and he has, is seeking reappointment at this time. So, I will read the name of Dennis DeWitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I asked for the next item to be put on the agenda, and this is looking at all of the different committees and boards and... all of the different committees and boards and that the selectmen are liaisons to. And we have a bunch of vacancies, and we might want to consider some reshuffling. So wherever you see DeWitt or Goldstein, that's a vacancy.
Well, you and I are going to do town-school partnership, right? So that one's.
Town, okay.
That's near the bottom.
So that's Waschinsky. Town-school partnership is going to be Waschinsky and Daley. Selectman Heller and I have been discussing swapping the Climate Action Committee. So Selectman Heller will take over as the board's rep to the Climate Action Committee.
Aye, you'd expressed a desire to go on Licensing Review Committee.
Okay, so Selectman Franco on the licensing?
Does anyone want to go on there with him? Anyone interested in licensing?
Um, I'll.
I'll just say, I feel like I'm fully committed already, so I'm not volunteering for, I mean, I have volunteered to do devotion, so you can vote my name by that. But I'm not volunteering for anything else at this point.
Yeah.
I'm willing to consider licensing.
Okay, sold.
Seems interesting. Is it?
Well, I guess you're going to find out.
Selectman DeWitt loved it. I don't know whether other people love it or not.
Marijuana dispensary regulation was exciting this past year.
And I will say, I will say, that one is going to be quite controversial, and I'm already hearing a lot from the neighbors, that the direction Selectman DeWitt and Goldstein went in was for less regulation than maybe we had all talked about at our last meeting. And frankly, from what I hear, I am not wild about what they proposed. I think we need more regulation than what I'm hearing. So that one could be quite exciting.
With, yeah, I think that that's a separate conversation for this board.
Right.
And I think I personally, as a new member of the commission, need to take an in-depth look at the proposed regulations for marijuana dispensary, and I'm sure Selectman Green does as well. So stay tuned for further developments there potentially.
I seem to have inherited the Gateway East, so put my name. Though I don't know if this advisory committee is still active, but the project is moving ahead, and we're engaging in public process, whether it's through.
It will probably evolve to some extent.
I'm just going to suggest to you, Mr. Chairman, that that puts you on a lot of committees.
Yeah, I was just looking, my name is all over this thing.
As chairman, you have a lot of obligations, and you might want to ask one of the new people if they would be interested in that one?
Well, I've been pretty deeply involved in the last, for the last six months. So that, if I'm going to give something up, I don't know if it would be that one.
What about Complete Streets?
That one's almost, that one is coming.
It's done, isn't it?
Yeah, that's coming to a head. You know, the cable is just starting, but I see Melissa's getting nervous.
Well, that, I mean, both of our new members are lawyers, so you might be able to hand off the, that one to somebody?
What do you think? Uh-oh.
So the new committee will be meeting, I think, the first week in June. We need to do ascertainment, which is to assess the community's needs, and that needs to be done by October. So it's a short time period for the Comcast renewal. RCN is followed right after that. So there's no learning curve to jump into yet, because the committee hasn't started meeting yet. You've got some history with the Brookline Interactive Group.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, since I've been the liaison with BIG.
I would be willing to join you. I don't know that I would be a perfect person to be the sole liaison, because I don't know anything about the subject.
Okay, so why don't we?
There's a learning curve for me, so.
So why don't we put your name on here? So there'll be two selectmen on that committee. Mr. Green, you're coming away pretty light.
Solar roof study committee.
That's done.
Sounded interesting.
You may have seen at your table, there's a revised one that we X-ed out one, so if you can, if you see that.
The MLK Committee has an opening.
I was sort of tricked into that. And I've already chaired one of its meetings.
That's it, he's on there.
And I think that it'd be appropriate, because I was involved with the drafting of the warrant article, to do the diversity inclusion in relations.
Sold.
Mr. Franco wants to, or maybe willing to.
I would be willing to. I think that you've got, you've got some real expertise there, and I wouldn't want to deprive you of the ability to see your work carried into action.
Diplomatic.
If it would help the Chair, I'd be willing to go on labor advisory with you, if that's a meaningful step that would lessen your load, but wouldn't cost myself.
I don't know if it would lessen it. I would value your input, and it's not one that has met too often, though.
So what you're saying is it's a great committee to be on.
Can I make one suggestion with that committee? If you don't, usually labor advisory is an offshoot of town-school partnership, so generally the assignments are the same. Because sometimes the town-school partnership will go into executive session as the labor advisory committee. It hasn't happened in several years, but it's usually the same assignment.
Sounds like you got another one.
That one hardly ever meets, so that's fine.
Okay.
So the one glaring thing I see here is zoning bylaw.
Ah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I.
Is there, that's one actually that could, it hasn't met in a while, and it generally meets prior to the closing of the town meeting warrant, to consider.
I'm going to, well, I'm going to say, I think it, again, might be appropriate for someone who has legal training. I think there is an issue that I would like to see the, I'm not volunteering to do it, to be perfectly clear. But there is an issue I would like to see the zoning bylaw take up, and that is a look at our parking requirements. And I think that in some sense that our, as we had our many discussions about Hancock Village, and we were appearing before the zoning Board of Appeals, they were insisting on meeting our zoning bylaw for parking, which meant that they were paving over a lot of green space, and they wanted extra parking for their units. They wanted a large number of cars, which is going to add traffic to the neighborhood. They were, you know, wanting to, happy to pave over the green space and everything. I really, it did occur to me at that point that our parking requirement, which is large, and many people over on, in the more densely populated part of town, feel like it's too large, and you should be encouraging people to use public transportation and not encouraging this excessive number of, like, I think it's, isn't it, it's two spaces even for like a one-bedroom apartment?
Right, it's two spaces even for a studio.
Even for a stu, I thought we changed that. No, that's still.
No, no.
So it's, I mean, that's pretty crazy, two spaces for a studio. Anyway, I think there is an important.
How many people live there?
Yeah, but do you really want them to be having two cars?
That raises a lot of issues.
Yeah. I'm saying, I think there's an important discussion that somebody needs to grab a hold of and start that ball rolling. So I think that, I know the zoning bylaw, I mean, periodically, things come up, like there's warrant articles about zoning, and the zoning bylaw committee takes a look at those. But I'm suggesting that, you know, I think if someone were interested in this issue, I mean, from, the green people feel very strongly that our parking requirement's too high. And as I said, I was kind of convinced, as we were dealing with Hancock Village, that maybe, we certainly, you know, could, there could be some adjustment of it. I think that maybe you could allow people, if they did other green things, to have more parking and less parking if they didn't do some other things. I mean, I think there's certainly a very interesting discussion that needs to go on there. And I'm, you know, if either of you are interested, then I would suggest.
One of the issues that you have to consider is if you reduce the parking requirement, does that encourage developers to build, you know, more and bigger units?
Right.
And what does that do to the, to the population in the town and square population? I mean, there's many issues.
There are.
It's a complicated question.
And I was actually saying, after dealing with Hancock Village, I'm going to go in with a warrant article, and the planning department, for the very reasons you just stated, said, whoa, I think, you know, that you don't want to be rushing into that, and there needs to be this discussion and everything. So there's definitely, you know, some important issues, I think, if anyone is interested in that and wants to take that.
Could you continue your discussion of, you know, the schedule of events that this committee would?
Well, typically, it's prior to the closing of the warrant, they'll meet a couple of times to discuss potential warrant articles. And sometimes they've met during the town meeting vetting process to consider changes to warrant articles that have, as they go through the vetting, so it's.
But actually, you know, this was prior to Neil being on the board, but when Selectman Banca first got on the board, he took on this committee, and they were proactively looking at some of the zoning bylaw, not just responding to warrant articles other people brought, but looking at things and potentially bringing their own warrant articles forward, so.
So I guess part of it would be whoever is, whoever is going to be the selectmen's rep will have some say over how proactive or not proactive this committee will be in for the next, you know, year. So it would be part of your vision of what the committee will be doing. I actually, in thinking about this originally, I was thinking I would go on it. But as Selectman Daley has reminded me, as I look at the list, this list has gotten quite long, but.
Is that something that maybe Nancy and I would?
Yeah, we've often had two selectmen on zoning bylaw.
I think, you know, there may be a little different nuances and perspectives that may be helpful.
Okay. Sold.
Okay, that's, that sounds good. So Selectman Heller will come on to cable and access television with me, and then Selectman Heller will take over climate action. Selectman Green will be going on to diversity, inclusion, and human relations, or actually, it's the liaison, you're not going on the commission.
Yeah.
Devotion School is going to be, but that's going to be a separate vote, but that's going to be Selectman Daley. Gateway East will be me. Hubway is me, no change. Labor Advisory is myself and Selectman Daley. Licensing will be Selectmen Franco and Green. MLK is Selectman Green. Town-school partnership will be myself and Selectman Daley. And then zoning bylaw will be Selectman Green and Heller. Do we need to do a vote, or?
We don't usually. It's your, you just tell us what we're on.
Okay, then I just designated everybody on those committees. Got it? Okay. Now, there are a couple of items at the bottom of the page that we do need to vote, and these are.
These are your assignments to.
Oh, these are my assignments.
Can I just say to the new members that if you have an issue that interests you, and you want, you know, to come to the rest of us, or come to the chairman and say, I'd like a committee appointed to do this, and I'm willing to take this issue on, there's plenty of opportunity for that as you go along.
And that's what happened with Hubway, for example.
Isn't that almost over?
Hubway, no, that's ongoing. Okay, so Committee of Seven is where, it's a short-term assignment where we select various architects.
Architects.
Architects, yeah, right. Various contractors who do work for the town. And there are two small projects that I'm told the same person should be on, the building envelope repair program and the elevator modifications. Typically, for something like that, it'd be one meeting. And this one is probably a good one to, for some of our newer members to get their feet wet in a committee of seven. So any volunteers?
I would defer to my new colleagues, but I would be happy to take that on if nobody else wants to step up.
I'd be interested in the Coolidge Corner Library feasibility study. I've done.
I'm on that one.
Oh, you are?
I'm taking that.
But I've done committees of seven, so it's not, you know, I mean, I'm happy to do the first two if you want me to.
Just the thing you should know before signing up is that you actually chaired the committee of seven, so.
Yes. Okay, and then I'm going to take on the Coolidge Corner Library.
Yep.
And so.
Elevator modifications, what's that?
Those are together, the building, envelope repair and elevator modifications, and I don't even know what.
I think they're multiple buildings, school, mostly, I think, school buildings. These are projects that have been approved in the capital improvement plan, and this is the selection of the architect or engineer that will do the project.
Yeah, you get proposals from either an architect or from the construction or whatever, and you go through them, and you, you guys rate them and come out with a favored one, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Klechner, you had something to say?
Well, I did want to say, I think I misspoke when I was dealing with the Neighborhood Conservation Commission appointment. It is true that Mr. DeWitt is an incumbent as an alternate, but there is a vacancy for the same term as one of those selectmen appointees to the major committee or the main committee. And so that's, that's what I had intended to have the board vote on, so either you could revote it, or I would have the minutes reflect that he would move from an alternate position to a regular position on the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission.
Does anyone have an objection, or should we revote it, or?
You can just call it again, and we'll revote it.
Yes, okay, so in this case, it is the permanent position of, on the Neighborhood Conservation District for a term to expire in 2017, Dennis DeWitt.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the last item on the agenda is the selectmen's appointment to the Devotion School Committee. This is, as we all know, an important project. It's the largest building project.
I will say, fortunately, Selectman DeWitt has done most of the work, so.
Or this phase of it. We're going to another phase.
No, but the, for the building committee, you do have some meetings after you go on, but, you know, that's, you're less involved in the process at that point, except for Helen Charulovsky, who stays involved with each and every large and small decision.
So I will move that Selectman Daley be our representative on the Devotion School Building Committee. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I also ask that you also vote to fill the vacancies that were generated by, well, let's see, I guess the school committee hasn't done one yet. by, well, let's see, I guess the committee hasn't done one yet.
I'm going to have a list next week, because they, but you should do Melissa Goff.
Yeah, if you could just do the local budget official, which was vacated by Sean Cohen, should be replaced with Melissa Goff.
Okay. So I'll move Melissa Goff as the local budget official appointee to the devotion school building committee. Those, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes.
And I'll work with you, Nancy, to identify the other.
Yeah, I did talk to Helen, and she, we were, there's also, I think the parent representative is.
And there may be some other changes that.
Is not, oh, the parent is actually listed on the committee.
I think it's the other, that there's an issue with, so what?
Yeah, so Sadna Brown is no longer a devotion parent. She's moved to a different school, so there's, and.
Well, we'll come back next week.
Yeah, there's a couple that are going to be changed, but I'll have a list for you later this week.
Okay, so that concludes tonight's board of selectmen meeting. Thank you.
Good job, Neil.
Good job.